Good evening, welcome everyone to the Board of Education Meet and Greet sponsored by the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP. We are pleased to present this opportunity for the voters of Baltimore County to meet the candidates and hear what they have to say about important issues facing our county. My name is Dr. Barbara Desmond and I am with both the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and proudly with the Randalls Town NAACP. I am also tonight acting as the moderator and will be asking the questions. The League and the NAACP are nonprofit, nonpartisan political organizations. Neither organization supports nor opposes candidates for public office and do not support political parties. Both organizations do seek to assure that all citizens participate in our democracy as active and informed voters. A few housekeeping details before we begin. If time permits, candidates may be able to respond to questions from the audience. Audience members can submit questions via the chat where they will be collected, screened, and passed to the moderator. Our screener will review the questions for repetition and choose for variety. Questions submitted should be appropriate for all candidates. Please note that no unauthorized recordings of this event are permitted as its content is the property of the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP and may not be used without permission. A recording will be available after the meet and greet and will be posted. And with that, we are ready to begin our evening. This evening, our timekeeper is Ms. Stacy Morrison and our question facilitator is Ms. Lisa Barkin. The Baltimore County Board of Education is responsible for selection of a school superintendent to lead the school system, and this is a critical issue at this moment. Also, the board develops and oversees education policies to guide the operation of the school system. Our candidates tonight are District One, Ms. Robin Harvey and Mr. Corey Coombs; District Two, Ms. Jane Lictor; District Three, Ms. Maggie Domonoski and Ms. Diane Young; District Four, Ms. Brenda Hatchessavoy and Mr. Samey Saint Kendra. Only the candidates in a district with a contested election were invited to the meet and greet. Now, we will begin the questions. The candidates will each make a two-minute opening statement first as well as a two-minute closing statement at the end of the question period. The order of the opening statements was determined by the alphabetical order of their last names. The closing statement will be in reverse order from the opening statement. The timekeeper will give a 30-second verbal warning and announce when the allotted time is out. After the opening statements, each of the candidates will have the opportunity to respond to questions. Since this is not a debate, candidates will not be given rebuttals. We will begin with the questions developed by the League of Women Voters and the Randalls Town NAACP, followed by questions from the audience if time permits. Candidates again will have two minutes to respond to the question and time limits will be strictly enforced. Our goal is to end the meet and greet at 7:30 and appreciate everyone's help in achieving this goal. We will now have a two-minute opening statement from each of the candidates as we begin. We will start with Ms. Domonoski.
Hi, can everyone hear me? I'm sorry, I'm having technical issues with my computer, so I had to switch to my phone. Is everything okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'll be brief. I have three reasons why I decided to run for the Board of Education and their names, or I should say their ages are six, six, and nine. They're my three children in public elementary school here in Baltimore County, District Three. And I absolutely adore our public school and I want to see my children continue in public education and I want to see our public education system be the best that it can be.
Thank you. Ms. Diane Young.
Hello, everyone. I'm running for District Three. Our children deserve a world-class education and I want to work to make that a reality for our students. I have 26 years' experience working in both Baltimore City and Baltimore County Public Schools. My background has provided me with insight into the daily operation of schools and the systemic knowledge to advocate for resources and a strong curriculum. It is my goal to restore the system to high academic excellence. An outstanding teacher can make all the difference in a child's education. One of my priorities is to promote teacher retention, show that we respect and appreciate them and provide them with the resources they need. Our teachers must have a strong and proven curriculum in their classrooms. I anticipate that we will raise the expectations for all students. We will offer the resources to the schools and to the teachers. We have been working diligently in Baltimore County on community schools. We have expanded them to 20 schools so far and we need to keep expanding that to support both our students and their parents. We deserve modern, safe, and well-maintained schools and I will work diligently to make the New Towson and the Delaney High Schools become a real.
Thirty seconds.
The two other priorities I want to work for is school safety in classrooms and in the buildings and clearly define expectations for all students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kendra.
Hey folks, my name is Samey Saint Kendra and I am running for the Board of Education from here in District Four in Baltimore County. I'm a lifelong Baltimore County resident. I'm a proud K-12 BCPS graduate and went to Newtown Elementary, Subbrook Middle, and Western Tech High School. Currently in my last year of law school at Maryland Law and really running now to serve on the Board of Education to bring the perspective of someone who went through the schools to the schools, lived in this community for 13 years, knows the problems firsthand and really hopes to bring the perspective of someone who's now a graduate of those schools and really sees what is it that we have to prepare our kids for in order for them to be successful no matter what they go on to do after graduating, whether that be for university, military service, breaking out as an entrepreneur, whatever it is, making sure that we're setting up all of our students to succeed. This vision that I have of the schools are really guided by three principles. One, student well-being. Two, equity and inclusion. And three, educator advocacy. I really like to focus on that student well-being perspective because I really think it's important that we focus on aspects that are going to prepare all of our students to succeed, as I said, no matter what they go on to do. So there, I'm really looking to focus on mental health and financial literacy with equity and inclusion. Really looking to bring an equitable lens to our school infrastructure and resources as well as our curriculum. And with educator advocacy, that really has to do with tailoring to the classrooms so that we allow teachers the freedom to really tailor to the needs of their individual classrooms and to support our teachers to make sure that we're bringing the best that we can to Baltimore County, keeping them here.
Thirty seconds.
Generations. And I'm really excited to be here today. The one endorsement I love to really talk about, and that means a lot to me, is endorsement of Tabco. Teachers are my heroes growing up and so to have their support means a ton. And I'm really excited to work with them, our teachers, our students, our parents, as we look forward to providing a 21st century world-class education right here in Baltimore County. Thank you.
Ms. Hatchessavoy.
Ms. Savoy is not here. Ms. Desmond, so please.
Thank you. Ms. Lictor.
Famous on mute. Hi, I would like to first thank the Randalls Town NAACP and the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. In a bipartisan race, it is critical that voters understand who they're casting their ballots for. My name is Jane Lictor and I'm a candidate representing District Two. Baltimore County has been my home personally and professionally for many, many years. I have resided in Baltimore County my entire life. I was an educator in BCPS for 37 years before retiring in June 2021. I've had a varied career, including special education teacher, curriculum and instruction coordinator, school principal. And during the last eight years of my career, I was an executive director, coaching, supporting, and supervising principals. These positions have resulted in a deep understanding of teaching and learning and a front-row seat to the work that teachers and principals do every day. I spent hundreds of hours in schools talking to and working with students, teachers, and administrators. I've observed countless lessons and have sat alongside teachers and administrators analyzing data and identifying next steps for school improvement. I'm running for the Board of Ed because I want to use these experiences, my knowledge and commitment to ensure that all students receive a quality education. I have three priorities. First, to improve academic achievement for all students. Far too many BCPS students are not achieving at grade level. We must ensure that the focus of decisions is resulting in improved outcomes for all students. Second is to make certain that classrooms are safe and secure environments for students and teachers. And third involves teacher recruitment and retention. We must work to attract the best teaching candidates and then ensure that working conditions result in career satisfaction and long tenures in BCPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coombs.
Good evening, everyone. I am somewhat of a unique voice. I am not a teacher. I'm not a principal. I'm a parent. I'm a parent who objectively can see that the job of the Board of Education and specifically the job of BCPS is to educate our youth and prepare them for the future. I, like Maggie, I got two kids. I have a seventh grader and I have a third grader. And I can tell you that just empirically speaking, my kids are not alone in the struggle, you know, of 110,000 students and a $1.5 billion budget. Not only are the kids not getting their money's worth, the parents are not getting their money's worth, the teachers are not getting their money's worth. The entire structure appears to be stuck in the mud. And we're using 19th century thoughts and trying to throw 22nd century money at it. And these are not approaches that are going to work. So my sort of platform, if you want to call it that, I'm not a politician. I'm a scientist. I am data-driven. I have 20 years in a laboratory. I test drinking water lead for a living. Like, these are basic things that I do. I'm good at data. I'm good at results-driven processes. The buildings need to be overhauled. That doesn't mean bulldoze all buildings. That means.
Thirty seconds.
Make them useful. Safety is incredibly important. A child is not going to stay focused if they are not safe in the classroom. The bullying, the conditions of the schools, the infrastructure, the food, these are all things that are not teacher-driven. They are not bus drivers. They are not lunch ladies or lunch facility people. These are systemic problems that are coming from the Board of Education direction and also from the BCPS corporate section.
Time is up. Thank you. Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, everyone. I thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Randalls Town NAACP for hosting this forum. My name is Robin Harvey and I'm a candidate for the Baltimore County Board of Education in District One. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm a social worker by training and profession licensed in the state of Maryland. I have over 20 years' experience working to improve the health, safety, and well-being of children and families in Maryland. I am ethically bound and driven by the core values of service, social justice, the dignity and worth of a person, and integrity. As a social worker, I'm trained to meet people where they are with a particular focus on listening so that we can begin to solve problems in a way that meets everyone's needs. I continue to work in my community, working towards the revitalization of Security Square Mall, working with the Baltimore County Green Alliance, and working with the Commission for Women as the commissioner representing District One. As a former guidance counselor for Boston Public Schools, I know the importance of education in the lives of children and as an indicator of their future success. I envision a Baltimore County where no matter where you choose to live, all our children will receive a quality education that will propel them to success. And the ways that we get there are, one, by ensuring that all core curriculum classes are taught by certified teachers.
Thirty seconds.
We get there by making sure that every school has thriving and active parent participation programs and by setting standards for school construction and renovation. We also get there by making sure that every child is in a school environment that is safe and free from violence. All of these strategies rely on a productive school board, working in concert with the superintendent and the county and government. A quality and equitable public education is the promise of America. And I'm asking for your vote so that I can do the work of ensuring that Baltimore County be good on that promise for all of our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we will move to the question and answer portion of the meet and greet. Question one, priorities. What do you see as the major educational issues for the county? And how will you use your position on the board to address these issues? Ms. Domonoski. You're on mute, Ms. Domonoski.
Yes, sorry. I thought we were going alphabetical, but it's fine. I'll go. I'm just, I'm good to go out first. So my first priority would be obviously getting our students back up to proficiency in all grade levels with a well-below majority of our students below the proficiency or above. I think that needs to be our number-one goal. And any, I think honestly the best way to do that is start implementing some of these policies that have already been put in place. We just need to make sure that they happen, policies like assigning students who are falling behind with the resources they need to get themselves back up. The second priority would be school safety. It's a huge issue. I would like to see students who are disruptive and break school rules. That needs to be addressed. And it needs to, all teachers and staff and students inside the classroom need to feel safe and they need to feel like when they're not safe, that those students or those concerns are being heard and taken care of. One way to do that is to implement, and again, policies that are already in place as far as, you know, whether it's expulsion when a student is continually bullying someone else or if someone's bullying at all, writing it up and making sure they're following up with the parents and they're getting together. So basically, we need to start implementing policies that are already in place and a lot of these problems will get solved.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey. Same question. If you need the question repeated, just ask. Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe that, as I stated in my opening remarks, that priorities for Baltimore County education are, one, to make sure that all of our core curriculum classes as a start are taught by certified teachers. We know that we were struggling with teacher retention and recruitment and there are several ways that we can start to address those issues. We need to look at our current hiring channels. Do we have enhanced and diversified pipelines and are we using them to the best of our ability? We're off to a promising start with the blueprint for Maryland's future and the $10,000 increase for teachers and additional bonuses for those that are teaching in underperforming schools. We need to acknowledge that teacher burnout is real. Implement burnout strategies that promote self-care and provide support to teachers during the school day. Another priority is also to make sure that we have active and thriving parent participation programs at all schools. Parents should feel welcome in the school and are crucial components of a school's ecosystem. No parent should feel like a guest in their child's school. We need to empower parents by giving them relevant roles in school functioning and culture. We have to engage them in meaningful ways and make sure that our communication is not just frequent but that is of consequence and provides them insight into what's happening.
Thirty seconds.
We also need to set standards for school construction and renovation, making sure that those standards are applied across every school. And we need to make sure that children are safe in their schools. Children can't learn in environments where there's fear and chaos. We have to combine consequences, personal accountability, consider social and emotional development, and foster a sense of self-discipline in order to support the overall safety and well-being of students, educators, and our support staff.
Time is up. Thank you. Mr. Kendra.
Yeah, thank you. There's tons of areas of improvement that we have to work on with our school system. But when I really think about our priority, when I really think about our focus, our focus is the students. It's the children. And when I think of that, I think of what is it that we need to do to prepare them to succeed after graduation? I believe that's the goal of our school system is to provide an education for our students. That way, they can go out and succeed, no matter where they come from, no matter what they look like, that they have every opportunity available to them because of the education that we provided to them as a school system. I think that is what defines us, what would define us as a world-class 21st century education system. And when I really think about that, I reflect on my experience as a former student and really looking at my peers who are now all six, seven, eight years out and really looking at what is it that we could have been teaching kids when I was in school that we should be teaching them now that would really help them succeed in today's world? And sort of the line that I've come up with that I really stand by is that if we can teach our students how to deal with their health and how to deal with their wealth, we will be setting them up to succeed no matter what they go on to do. And what I mean by that is by implementing mental health and financial literacy as a part of the regular curriculum in schools. I can tell you in 13 years of BCPS education, I received maybe half a day on how to deal with stress and that was my mental health education. And at some point, some economics teacher made a passing comment about saving and budgeting is good and that was my foray into personal finance. And that can't be it. We have to teach our students from a young age and all the way through graduation. One, how do you deal with mental issues? How do you deal with trauma? How do you deal with stress in today's world in a healthy manner?
Thirty seconds.
How do you deal with your financial, your personal finances? How do you save? How do you invest? How do you budget? How do you do these things? So no matter what you end up doing, no matter how much money you end up making, you can position yourself to be successful and meet the needs of your eventual family and your own needs. And so I really think that when it comes down to it, our priority has to be students. That has to be our focus. And we have to focus on preparing them to succeed after they graduate from our schools. And I think we can get that done if we teach them how to focus on or how to deal with their health and their wealth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coombs.
Thank you. The priorities have to be foundation. The foundational building blocks that make talented students are safe and secure buildings, first of all. If a child can't get to school because the buses are not operating or the unreliable transportation, that's a, that is a ding in the armor, we'll call it. The inefficiencies or improperly executed disciplinary actions. Classrooms have to have a teacher who is able to discipline and able to control their classroom. They can't talk about financial wellness or they can't talk about boosting children up if they are distracted by disruptive students or they don't have the resources to teach the topic that they are tasked to teach. So making the classroom safe and giving the power back to the teachers to control their classroom and effectively transmit their message so that students are receptive to it is absolutely critical. Also, getting students to buy in to their education, similar to what Samey is saying. Give them building blocks to understand that this class will transition into your future. And if you take this to heart, you will be successful. Give them examples.
Thirty seconds.
Leverage outside community organizers who have good, positive outcomes because of specific topics. We have to lift these children up. We can't just allow them to flounder. We have to be able to teach them skills to be able to succeed in the future. And right now, that's just not effectively happening in BCPS.
Thank you. Ms. Lictor.
Yes, I stated my three priorities in my opening remarks as far as student achievement, safe and secure classrooms, and then teacher recruitment and retention. I want to focus on the student achievement portion of that. Nothing breeds success like success. Our kids need to feel successful in their classroom and they need to be able to succeed with their studies and their work. We were not succeeding where we needed to be before the pandemic and then the pandemic just exacerbated a lot of those gaps. But we can't come through a model of remediation. We need to make sure that our teachers are prepared to come through a model of acceleration. We need to make sure that our teachers understand who is in front of them, what the data is, what their strengths are, what their needs are, and then where are the supports to help them get to those grade-level skills that they need to attain in reading and writing and math, in science and in social studies. So the idea of acceleration is a lot on a teacher. You need to understand the standards that the children are working on in their grade level, but then they also have to understand what came before that. So we need to really support our teachers with professional development to make sure that they have that range of understanding, their grade level, the grade level before, the grade level after. We need staff in our building that can support our teachers. Our teachers are working with a variety of skill levels in their classroom and it's difficult to be able to meet all of kids' needs without those additional, without those additional resources. So we need to ensure that our specialists, that we have math specialists and reading specialists to help our teachers meet the needs of the kids in the classrooms. And we need data points to help us progress monitor. As a board, we can't wait for two years till a contract's done to say, did that work? Did that make a difference for our kids' academic success? So we need progress monitoring and data points that help us see, is this set of materials, are these resources working in each and every one of our buildings?
Time is up. Thank you. Our next topic is achievement disparities. As a board member, what will you do to increase academic success and eliminate achievement disparities experienced by minorities and students in poverty? We will begin, Ms. Domonoski.
I'm sorry, I was distracted because I think Diane hasn't had a chance to answer that question.
Oh, Ms. Young, I am so sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Young, let me repeat that question, the first one. What do you see as the major educational issues of the county? And how will you use your position to address these issues?
I believe we have multiple priorities at this point. I would rank school safety as one of the most. If students and teachers do not feel safe in their school, in their classrooms, learning will not take place. I know we have expectations for students and we have rules and we need to make sure that they are followed and there are consequences when they are not followed. School facilities, I think, is another priority. We have to feel like, our students have to feel like they are valued. And when they are in rundown schools where most things are not working correctly, then they don't feel valued at all. So I would say school facilities. And then raising academic achievement, supporting special education students and improving their services and absolutely improving the communication with parents, with staff, and with our communities. And one thing, because I have a high school background, I would really focus on is career and technology education. The Maryland Blueprint for Tomorrow has provided funding for this and these programs allow students to develop entry-level skills, earn certifications. Should I keep talking? It allows them to better prepare for their future. If they will, they can.
Thirty seconds.
Their careers. They can earn college credit and they will have a better thought as to what they want to do in their future. So I would promote these through all high schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Do we have any other candidates joining us at this time?
Yes, Ms. Savoy has just come in.
Thank you. Ms. Savoy, I will ask the question from the session we have just closed. Priorities. What do you see as the major educational issues of the county? And how will you use your position to address these issues? Ms. Savoy. Ms. Hatchessavoy, can you hear me? I don't think we have a correct connection there. I will have to proceed to the next question. The next question involves achievement disparities. As a board member, what will you do to eliminate achievement disparities and increase academic success among all students, particularly minorities and students in poverty? We will begin with Ms. Domonoski.
Yes, I believe that if we focus on keeping, getting all of our children the same successful education and making sure they don't fall behind and getting them the resources they need to be math, science, E.L.A., all the core subjects at proficiency, then no one. Um, math, science, D L A, all the core subjects at proficiency, then no one is, there isn't a discrepancy for treating. It all and making sure everyone gets what the help that they need to move forward and we don't um. Let them fall behind, then there is no discrepancy. Uh, forced, whether it's in a poverty stricken area, we need to get that school up to code and up to, and the staff, everyone needs to be working the same. On the same, with the same tools and the same materials so that the students are receiving the same education and the same. Same tools to, to succeed in, in school and after school. We um. We need to treat all our children like they matter and they're the same and that they can get this done. And if someone, no matter what color their skin or. Who they are, as long as they are treated and, and brought back and given the help that they need to. To pass their grades or to pass BA proficiency in their grade levels. Then there shouldn't be a discrepancy. We just have to treat every school as if it's their school. Like, we need to, like, we have my, our school pub, my, my public school here. All schools like I would treat my school here. That's it.
I, thank you, Ms. Harvey.
I thank you. I think one of the ways or some of the ways that we close the uh education gap and disparities, especially among. Uh, students of color and students of low status socioeconomic status. Is one, making sure that we engage parents in the process. Students want their parents to be. Involved in the school system. Parents set expectations for their children. Parents, uh, students seek um. Uh, reinforcement and encouragement from their parents. So I think it's important that we not forget the role of parents in that process. I also think we need to set benchmarks uh by school. All children, every public school require a certain level of services of um. Performance and that we make sure that we tailor how we get there by what's happening in the school. We can't have a cookie cutter approach. When we have different schools with different issues, different challenges and different strengths. We also need to expand learning styles. Some children are tactile learners. Some children respond didactically to learning in lectures. Some people need, some students need experiential learning. So making sure that we combine. All of those types of learning in our instruction will be important to help propel students to success. I also think we need to remove some prerequisites that we have for expanded opportunities. That only limit those opportunities to a small group of students. There's an old saying uh that nothing beats a failure but a try. And when you have students who say, oh, I can't go into gifted and talented. Oh, I can't do the A P class. I'm never going to pass the entry test. I'm never gonna uh pass, get through the prerequisites. Uh, then we are limiting their opportunity and telling them that they can't even try before they get started. So I think that's important. Uh, it's all about expectations that we set for our students. And expectations that we set for our educators in their role in teaching our students. Journey.
Thank you, Mr. Kendra.
Awesome, thank you. And I really have two words on how we can solve this, and those two words are equity and inclusion. Uh, and really, as I said, those are, that's one main point of my vision for the schools and. Uh, the two specific areas that that really addresses is our school resources and our curriculum. So I'll start off with school resources. I went to a majority minority high school. Uh, and the first day, very first day of freshman year, we sit down for U S government class. We open up our textbook, and this is in two thousand and twelve, August of two thousand and twelve. That textbook tells me George Bush had just been elected president in two thousand. We can't, we can't provide resources to our schools, especially our underserved and majority minority schools, resources that are out of date, that are out of touch. And then ask why are our students of color from minority communities failing? Why are they not keeping up? It's because of the resources that we're giving to these schools, to communities that are historically underfunded, historically underrepresented. We really have, excuse me, really have to bring an equity lens to how we're, to how we're looking at school resources to make sure that schools and communities that have been historically underserved, that have been historically underprivileged. That we're using equity lens to put resources there where they are needed most. Uh, and then, as I said, in addition to school resources with equity and inclusion, I'm really looking at the curriculum. How do we have a, how do we create a curriculum? And we must create a curriculum. Uh, that is reflective of the diversity and, and, and cultures of our, of our county. We live in one of the most diverse counties and one of the most diverse states. There is no reason that our curriculum should not match that. And then we do have a curriculum that matches that. Then allow students from minority backgrounds, students of color, to see themselves in their curriculum, in the curriculum, to feel themselves in the curriculum. I experienced that firsthand. I didn't feel a part of my own curriculum. Nobody talked about my background or my faith in, in, in our world, world cultures or world studies. Uh, or history lessons. I had to be the one to talk about myself. And that no student should have to do that. Every student should see themselves and be reflected in their curriculum. Because that is how we ensure that they are engaged in their curriculum and that they are going to take every opportunity available to them to succeed and meet all the academic standards that we set for them.
Time is up. Thank you, Mr. Coons.
Thank you, Dr. Desmond. Um, the starting point for me would be equity of opportunity. So I'm in District One. We have Lansdowne High School. We have Woodlawn High School. We have Western Tech. We have Catansville. Um, Woodlawn has, has been struggling for many, many years. The uh, the results at Lansdowne High, you know, they are currently rebuilding that entire school, you know, which has been twenty years in the making. Um, same with Delaney, same with, you know, there's a lot of schools that do not have the opportunities that they should have. These are, these are baseline expectations that we expect from our um, our government systems, and right now that is not happening. The existing administration and the existing county executive. Have, have clearly not had their eye on successfully executing, you know, the busing systems. When continually I see a aid bus, we have a school Facebook page and every single day it is the exact same bus. And if you actually dive down to the demographics, that bus is like sixty percent English as second language. So speaking to Samaya about like the opportunity, like these kids are not even getting to school, let alone being taught, let alone having the opportunity. So why is that a scenario? There should be a mechanism by which. If there's going to be failures, they should be spread across the spectrum, and right now that's not happening. It seems like. We're letting people fall away instead of propping them up, and we, we really need to focus on the students with I E Ps. We have to find better, more efficient ways to fund these support programs to help students with I E Ps, to bring up the bottom. And not drag down the top. And, and that's something that I feel like right now, that's what we're doing is. Is everybody is diluting their expectations down instead of lifting up those who need it most. Um, and that would be the end.
Sorry, that was time up. He was done before two minutes.
Ms., Ms. Lipter, do you need the question repeated?
Yes, please.
Achievement disparities. As a board member, what will you do to increase academic success? And eliminate, help eliminate achievement disparities experienced by students, particularly minorities and students in poverty?
So it needs to start with data and multiple data points. So when we talk about the disparities. Where, where are the classrooms where the disparities are existing? What are the factors and variables in those classrooms? Very often, if we look at data and we find out who is teaching our students who are struggling the most, it's our newest, our youngest teachers. Um, a first year teacher may be a wonderful teacher at some point, but that first year is overwhelming for teachers. So if we have our highest need students with our highest needs teachers, is that getting us the outcomes we need? So that's just one data point, but we need multiple data points to tell us who in the classrooms are not succeeding. What are the variables that are causing them not to succeed? And what are the barriers that we've put in the way that we could remove? A lot of times, we as adults are putting things in the kids' way that's allowing them not to succeed. It's taking the expectations and making low expectations. We need our administrators in classrooms helping our teachers. We need to free up our administrators to be able to get in there, to be able to watch, to be able to listen for evidence of high expectations. Be able to listen for evidence that I'm able to meet that student's need where they are. Um, very often the intent does not match the impact. We purchase something, we buy something, we do something in a classroom thinking it's going to yield X, but it yielded Y and we never pivoted. So it's so important that we have the data on achievement to find out where are our kids not achieving. And where are they achieving? We have examples in our county of where things are working. So why not find out where they're working and try to replicate them in other places? Um, we also need to make sure that, as um Ms. Harvey said, that our parents are part of this. They shouldn't be surprised when they get an interim, or they shouldn't be surprised when they get a report card. We need to make sure that our teachers understand how to have good communication with their parents to make them part of the success story. And not just talking to them when things aren't doing well.
Barbara, time was up.
All right, Ms. Savoy. Ms. Savoy, would you unmute yourself?
Would you repeat the question?
All right, achievement disparity. As a board member, what will you do to increase academic success? And help eliminate achievement disparities experienced by students, particularly minorities and students in poverty?
The first thing I would do is assure that finances and resources are being distributed equitably. And diligently wo- working to close the achievement gap and the digital divide by supporting student learning so that they can become productive citizens. I would also like to see every school have a therapeutic crisis intervention center. To deescalate crisis situations that are creating a safe and unhealthy. Uh, to deescalate situations that are creating unhealthy um places, a climate for the school. Also, I think students should be involved in apprenticeships and they should be available to students on a career path. And students should be exposed to careers that will be available after school. Funds should be equitably dispersed so that all children have an opportunity to be engaged in certificate programs and be career ready.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Uh, one of the things that was not mentioned uh that is important that V C P S is doing are the community schools. And right now we have twenty of them in Baltimore County and are looking to open more. We, the schools take very young children, pre-kindergarten, and they begin working with them. The most critical years for learning tend to be the most, the first five years of school. Um, this will give the. Opportunity to work with the students and they also work with the parents. So the parents, whatever help they need, they will provide for the parents to get these students off. To a sound foundation and a good start with parental support going forward. And I think students need to see themselves in successful careers all the way through school. Um, and they, they need to recognize that they can achieve, and if they can see themselves, they can do it.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Our next topic concerns school safety. The question, what are key policy considerations related to discipline and school safety? In Baltimore County public schools? We will start with Ms. Domonowski.
As I've said before, I believe that the policies in place are good ones. They just need to be put into practice. Teachers need to be able to control their classrooms, and if that means they need to remove a student from that classroom, they need to be able to remove that student from that classroom. If they need to call in the parents to have a, a confrontation or not confrontation of. A council, a discussion about what's going on. They need to be able to do that and they need the support from their administrators and their principals to, to do that. They need to, uh, I, I, the biggest thing is teachers need to be able to feel like they are in control again. If there's a, a fight breaks out, they need to be able to break that up and not feel threatened. They need to be able to either contact a resource officer and that resource officer needs to be able to control the situation. There has been too many um violent situations happening out throughout Baltimore County that concerns me greatly with three young children. Um, I, I have a. Everyone needs to be heard, including the, the, the one that is causing the problems and the one that is being the receiver of the problems. And there needs to be a way to keep everybody safe and. Whether that means that person needs to be removed for a certain amount of time and have. You know, see a mentor or like a mentorship program where, you know, someone is acting out consistently. They have had a mentor to help them make. Uh, again, we just need to, we have a good system in place. I just would like to see it um put into practice.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you. Uh, as I stated earlier. Children can't learn if there is fear or chaos in their learning environment. So I, I also think it's a reasonable expectation that students behave appropriately in the school setting. We can't disregard personal. Accountability as it is, is a character trait necessary for success. So we do a disservice to our students if we dismiss their own personal accountability in situations that arise. I think it's also reasonable to consider the socio-emotional development of children in response to the strategies. Uh, that we develop because that impacts how children show up from, for school. No one enters into their workspace or their learning environment devoid of the circumstances of life. So it's important that we have substantive yet effective strategies that foster self-discipline. And support the everyday overall safety and well-being of students. Currently, there's a three-pronged approach to uh behavioral issues and discipline issues in schools, and it involves character education. Uh, conscious discipline and positive behavioral intervention and support. So the first question has to be, how are the schools implementing that three-pronged approach? And how effective is it? We've had multiple examples where there's escalating violence in schools, and we would be doing a disservice if we did not look at. How we're implementing those results, where they're. Where they're ineffective and how we change our approach to meet the needs of students and educators to provide safe learning environments for our children. Really, at the end of the day, self-discipline is the preferred outcome. We want our children to know and understand from the teaching and training they receive at home to the expectations that are set in the school system. That they must behave appropriately because it's their job to learn and they can't do it in an environment that's violent and full of chaos.
Thank you, Mr. Kendra.
Thanks. So from my experience, see, and I went to these schools for thirteen years and I saw my fair share of violence and bullying and. You know, verbal harassment, and there's really two key sort of spawn points of where this hate and, and this violence sort of comes from. One, comes from a place of mental issues, of trauma, of stress that students experiencing that manifest itself as being violent or being disruptive in class. Or two, uh, out of a place of hate and vitriol, often from, uh, often directed towards students of color or from minority backgrounds where they're not really understood by their peers. And that's why I think if we really focus on those two sort of spawn points of violence and, and disruption in our schools, we can solve a lot of this issue. If one, we focus on teaching our students, again, with the mental health, health piece of how to deal with their personal trauma, how to deal with issues at home, how to deal with stress in a healthy manner. It won't manifest itself in these instances of violence and disruption. And the same thing with an inclusive curriculum. We have an inclusive curriculum where everybody's learning about their peers around them and about the world we live in. We can get rid of those instances of violence and, and uh safety issues uh that come out, come from a place of hate or vitriol where students simply don't know about their peers. Uh, and really as sort of a general practice, I think we really have to look at a board of transitioning from a punitive approach to our discipline to restorative approach to discipline. I'm in law school, so I've learned plenty about the restorative practice of justice versus the punitive practice of justice. And I can tell you right now, our school system is purely punitive. A great way to look at it is. If a kid gets in trouble, they get suspended, they come back to school and that's it. There is no restorative approach to that. There is no process in place to make it restorative uh process. We're looking at what caused that issue in the first place. What can we do while the kid is at home to still facilitate their learning? Uh, and what is it that we can do when they come back to try and make sure the underlying issues that caused that outburst, that caused that disruption is being dealt with? Not that they're simply coming back and being thrown back in the classroom without resolving those issues. And so I really think by implementing a restorative uh approach to our discipline system. Change the safety in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Coons.
Thank you. Uh, for me, it starts off with teachers be able to, being able to control their classroom. If a student is disruptive, they should not impact. If we want to discuss equity, if there's twenty kids in a classroom and there's one child who's acting up that's detracting from those nineteen other students. Those nineteen other students are not getting an. those nineteen other students are not getting an equal opportunity to learn that material. So now we have one student that is being disruptive. I'm not talking zero tolerance, but I'm talking about some level of creativity and effective execution of existing rules that are not currently being applied. We, we spend a lot of time in the classroom, not on classroom topics. There should be more counselors, there should be more safety resource officers. Those are positions I fully advocate that there should be more funding. There should be more mechanisms for alternative, alternative education, whether it be in the event that a student is suspended or expelled. We now are in 2022, virtual learning is an absolutely solid option. If they cannot function in the classroom, they should still have the opportunity and have access to a B C P S education and, and supplement their education with life skills, with training to help them cope with whatever trigger it was that caused the outburst. I'm not saying remove them entirely, but do not detract from the other nineteen students.
Thirty seconds.
one that needs redirection. They need support, they don't, they don't need to distract from the rest of the system. Personal responsibility is critical. Students buying into their own education is part of that. If a student sees that another child can act up, that child will act up. So actual consequences, while they are punitive in nature, they are a learning tool as well. There has to be a, a cause and an effect relationship. It's part of humanity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lector.
I, we need both a proactive and a reactive plan. Um, the proactive plan is, you know, what are those S C L practices that are supposed to be implemented in the school? And then first, are those practices being implemented? And then where are they working and where are they not working? We very often, some of the practices that we use only exacerbate the issues. They not, aren't truly working for all of our kids. So I know I keep talking about data, but what, we need data attached to the S C L practices too. And the behaviors that have been extinguished and the behaviors that are still taking place and may need another method, um, to extinguish them. We also have to look reactively. When egregious behaviors happen, do our principals have the resources available to make the decisions they need to make? Those of us who have been educators know that when we went to school, we weren't given S C L courses. We weren't taught how to help kids and identify warning signs. We were taught content and pedagogy. So we need to make sure that we are helping our principals and helping our teachers gain the skills they need so that they can look for warning signs in our children so that we can find things that are occurring way before they escalate out of control. When we see the violence and we see the fighting, we're just seeing the end outcome. We haven't seen what led up to that. Usually things don't just happen randomly. Something has taken place, something has gone on, and there have been adults in the building. Do we know, have we educated our staff on what to look for? Because this is not something that was part of most of our coursework as educators. We also need to look, is there a plan in place when kids come back? Um, one of my colleagues already mentioned this, but very often it's just a conference. One conference is not going to change things. We need to have a solid plan in place with the parents or guardians, the child and the school. And then we need to make sure that that plan is being worked and is making a difference. If we look at the data, a lot of our children that are struggling with behavior, it's not a one-time thing, they're doing it over and over again, which means we're not meeting the need. Period. Okay.
Thank you so much. We are now going to turn to Ms. Savoy.
Okay, I think the first thing we need to do is to provide quality teachers for the students and hire more minority teachers. Children will actually do better if they see people of the, who are like them, just like with the curriculum. Baltimore County does not have a lot of minority teachers in the school. Children will come, be more apt to come to a teacher and discuss their problems if they're having homes, problems or whatever, some traumatic situation going on. If that person looks like them or if they feel they can even relate to them. Doesn't always have to look like them, but at least they would feel relatable. They appear relatable. Also, some of the most serious issues are bullying. And, um, these students are exposed to all kinds of trauma, sexual, domestic and family issues and COVID. And there's a lack of school clinicians to engage with the students in stressful and dangerous situations. So what do we do? We need to open a tra- trauma center in every school and have three or four clinicians available at all times or at least on call. I think a lot of these, um, fights and everything could easily be deescalated or just done away with if kids had somebody to talk to. And it's just doesn't seem, appear that there are many people who talk to these students until they're in trouble and then they want to suspend them, send them to an alternative school or get them put out of the system altogether. So those are the kind of things that we need to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Dr. Desmond. We have policies in place. We need to be very clear about what they are. And then we need to support our teachers. Our teachers cannot be afraid in their classrooms and we cannot lose the education for twenty-five students in a classroom because one is disruptive. But we also need to make sure that our principals have the resources to address these issues. If a student is removed from the classroom, we need to determine what the issue is, whether it's a mental health issue or it's, it's a family trauma that is causing some of this and try to help the student. And there has to be a plan. If a student is suspended, there has to be a plan and there has to be someone responsible for following up to make sure that services are provided. And I, I know people are very negative about alternative education, but some of these alternative schools also have a strong guidance counselor and social worker component into it. And they also have school psychologists. So they can, on a short-term basis, do a lot to help these students and transition them back into school. We want the students to be in school, but we cannot give up the majority's education
Thirty seconds.
disruptive students. So we need to provide our principals with more resources to help the students at this point.
Thank you. The next topic is accountability. How will you work to ensure that there is transparency and real accountability from the superintendent and staff? We will begin with Ms. Dominowski.
I think, I think one way we can ensure real accountability is by, um, implementing the controversial issues policy across the board. Getting parents more involved, letting them see the lesson plans, letting them understand what's being taught in the, in the classroom, what the superintendent wants to see happen, what his goals are for the classrooms, the teachers, the administrator, uh, the administrators and principals. We need, we need more people, more oversight. And who's more gonna, who is going to care more about what's happening in their children's schools than the parents? The parents get, can get more involved, there will be more accountability for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you. I think accountability starts with knowing and understanding what the goals are for our students in the school system. It's one thing to say we're going to close the performance gap, but the goals really should be, be how we're going to do that. And then making sure that they're measurable goals, that we can then use data to determine success. We have to be able to pivot, uh, when we find that, that our strategies aren't working, which means that we need to be assessing them frequently. An annual review is not good enough when you're having a struggling school uh, with a large performance gap. We want to know on a quarterly basis, on a semester basis, how children are doing in terms of their grade level performance, how teachers are doing in terms of meeting expectations and, and the resources that we're providing them. We have to look at things, uh, we have to look at these issues from an individual school perspective as well as a system-wide perspective. And we have to do it with a critical eye and an acceptance of the fact that we're going to have to pivot when needed, that our strategies can't be long-term and failing for long-term because our children don't have the time for us to correct over years. They need our correction. They need us to correct our courses in real time so that they can get the most out of their
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kendra.
Thank you. So before I get into specifically what I would do, I want to highlight something that the board has undertaken or the current board has undertaken, that I think it's upon us as the next board to carry on with and strengthen. Uh, and so currently the board is revising board policies eighty-five hundred and eighty-five oh one. Uh, one deals with the, uh, the system under which they review themselves as the board and which they review the superintendent on a yearly basis. And the move that they're doing is to make it more transparent, to set the goal earlier in the year, to make it more clear what the goals for each, the board and the superintendent are. That way it's easier to make that assessment when it's time. So I think that's a great initiative the current board is starting. That'll be upon us to further that if we need to, if we see there needs to be more, uh, you know, specific details change and to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to that policy of, of, uh, assessing ourselves and the superintendent in accordance with those new policies as they're established. Uh, but sort of outside of specific board policies, I really want to talk about communication. I think what the board really needs to focus on is a coherent communication strategy. What I mean by that is, look, we can't expect every parent to tune in every other Tuesday for two to three hours to try and understand what's going on with the school system. We, as a board, have to make sure one of our priorities is that our communications are clear, that they're explaining why and that they're, they're concise. And specifically with the why, I think is super important, is we have to explain the rationale for some of our decisions. We have to explain why so that we came to the decision that we made, not simply saying this is the news policy we set or this decision we came to and that's the end of it. Because that is where we sort of have some questions fester that then parents turn to
Thirty seconds.
Uh, and then especially with the clear communication, also with clear goals. I think making sure that we have clear goals that are measurable, that's that parents and, 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 you know, hopefully in, in four years, when, when whoever's running again, that we can be held accountable to whatever goals it is that we set that for us, ourselves or superintendent, whether, and whether they were met or not met. And really meeting parents where they are. As I said, we can't expect stu- uh, parents to come to every board meeting every two weeks. We have to make sure we're going to meet them where they're at, whether that be P T A meetings, setting up individualized meetings with parents who have concerns. We have to meet them where they are to talk to them, hear their issues.
Thank you, Mr. Coombs.
Thank you. The, the focus of the question was on accountability. I'm going to focus my accountability on, um, B C P S corporate and also the superintendent of schools. We've gone through a number of superintendents since my children have been in school. There's been a variety of, um, uh, objectives. The current ones, I am a little bit thin on information, sort of. Messaging is a little bit short. I would like to know a much clearer objective from the, the current superintendent. And to me, that should absolutely include measurable changes to busing, to food service, to I E P executions, to, um, building and construction of schools, to effective uses of taxpayer money. I would love to have a conversation with the board on a pilot program to open up overtime for teachers. So teachers historically are pay, underpaid, they feel like they work too many hours, they're underpaid. I would love, in a similar vein to what most companies have gone to in 2022, where they're doing virtual work, you clock in, you work, you, you clock out, you go home. Whether that location is at the school system or at home, if you're home grading papers, you clock in, you clock out when you're done. I would love to see that as a data set to see how much hour, how many hours teachers are doing because then
Thirty seconds.
the information to properly staff our classrooms. If, if a great teacher is excelling, but they're working sixty hours a week, they need a teacher's aid. Stop beating that person up and provide them a twenty-hour teacher's aid for half the price of that teacher if they were to get overtime. So financially incentivize proper staffing at the school level and stop abusing the teachers, but properly compensate and get more accurate information on the labor needed to execute the job.
Time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Lector.
I guess, um, with the accountability, after goals are set, we need benchmarks. We need short-term benchmarks and we need long-term benchmarks. And we need to be asking for the data that goes along with those benchmarks frequently. We can't wait and let things, um, get out of control and then find out that, that the money being spent has not done what it was intended to do. Um, we need to disaggregate the data for those benchmarks to find out where is it working and where isn't it working? We need to disaggregate it by schools, we need to disaggregate it by, by every possible way, right up to that student group level to find out which groups of students are not meeting with success. We also need to be able then to communicate this information to our stakeholders. But in multiple ways, one method of communication is not going to meet the needs of a system as varied and as large and as diverse as ours. So what are the multiple ways that we're using to communicate our benchmarks and our success towards that benchmarks with parents and guardians all over this county? And also to students, we have a very active, um, student population whose voice wants to be heard. They should also be aware of the benchmarks that we're setting and how we're achieving those and their views towards it too. So those are just a couple ideas about that accountability. Um, but we have to have it set right away. When things are proposed to a board, those benchmarks need to be included. It shouldn't be an afterthought, it shouldn't be coming back later and saying, well, this is how we're going to measure it. It needs to be presented at the, at that time, um, that it's being presented to the board for consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy.
Uh, accountability. The first thing we need to do is communicate to stakeholders and parents. And that parents know that they're our greatest asset. Accountability should begin of the school board, each department's visions and goals, oversight management by looking at the data to conclude what's working and what's not working. Are these goals measurable or not? Holding everybody accountable for everything that's, you know, goes on, whether it's wrong or right. But data is most important. You need the data to determine if we should move forward or if this, or right, pardon me? Or do, uh, or start other goals? Looking for other goals and other means to achieve those goals. But always keep in mind that parents are our greatest asset. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Young.
Thank you. There was a Public Works report that was submitted a little over a year ago. Some of those recommendations were, uh, have been implemented. I, I think it should be public knowledge, what recommendations were actually done and what the plans were to carry forth in the future recommendations. I would like to see a financial audit for the entire school system so we have a clear idea of where our money is going and what our money is doing. Maryland Blueprint for the Future will be bringing a lot of funding into school and we need to make certain that that funding is used to help our students and our teachers. This plan is very flexible. So if in implementing the blueprint, we find that there is a need that we really need to work on, the state legislature can go back and modify this blueprint. Communication with all parties is critical. Um, and we also have to bring in a student voice, which I find is usually not ever considered. And I think we need to bring them more in to our communication efforts. And we need to get our parents more involved so that they know that we have a quality curriculum with a data-driven result so that our, they know what our students should be
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now proceed due to time, we will now proceed to our closing remarks. And we're going to do that in the, from each candidate, and we're going to do that in reverse order. At this time, we are going to, oh, another mistake, Ms. Young. Uh, you did not speak on accountability.
I did, I did.
Did? Okay. Well, now, um, we're going to go straight to the closing remarks. Ms. Young.
Okay. I believe I have qualifications to be on the board and I have the background. I have multiple priorities that we need to be working on and I believe I've discussed them. One of the biggest one is teacher retention. We have to make sure that we know that our teachers are valued. And we have to rethink education for our students. We are at a point in time, there are so many opportunities for them and there are so many ways that we could change learning and change education for our students. We don't necessarily need a high school student there every day. We can offer internships, we can offer other learning opportunities. We really need to work on that. School faci- Um, school facilities, school safety is 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 so important and the opportunity gap within our schools is critical. Um, we have almost fifty nine percent of our students living in poverty. Uh, we need to address that. Uh, we need to address all the immigrants that are coming in, that we need to be providing services for. Um, the true, the true worth of our school system is going to be mirrored in the success of our county. And we're second. Uh, and we need to look at everything to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Ms. Savoy, you're on mute.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to thank everyone uh, for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. In closing, I would like to you to remember that I have served public education at all levels to include English teacher, high school administrator, Maryland State Department of Education, juvenile detention, and adjunct college professor. As a board member, I will prioritize students' needs and interests. I will use data to make informed decisions regarding my district. I will act as an advocate for my community and ensure that their interests are always considered. As a board member, I will help to develop a clear vision for Baltimore County schools. I will always be available to the community and strategically use resources and monitor progress by using data. A vote for me is a vote for equity for all. Therefore, I'm asking the citizens of the fourth district of Baltimore County to vote for me for the next member of the Baltimore County School Board, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lector.
Yes, thanks again for the opportunity to speak tonight. It may sound cliche, but I truly believe that our children are our future. All parents and guardians should feel confident that when they send their child to a B C P S school, that they'll receive a quality instructional program in a safe and secure environment. And while I believe that members of a board need to bring multiple experiences and perspectives to that role, it is critical that an experienced educator's voice is included and heard as a member of the B C P S Board of Education. I am prepared, willing and motivated to be that voice. I will ask the difficult and relevant questions, I will study data and other pertinent information. I will listen intently to stakeholder feedback. And I will make certain that the focus of the board remains on improving student achievement for all of our students. I'm committed to being part of a functional board of education that represents the community and works with the superintendent, his staff and the county executive and his office to restore B C P S to a status of high academic excellence. So I hope that you will consider me for the District Two Board of Ed um, member on election day, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coons.
Uh, I will start off with, I'm not a politician, I'm a parent, I have two children. Um, I'm also a scientist, I'm a unique voice in in this candidacy race. I would be a unique voice and a unique perspective on the Board of Education. Um, with a awareness and willingness to learn when it's not my subject matter expertise. And the confidence and boldness to project my voice when I do know what we're talking about. Um, if there are topics that are in my wheelhouse, I am absolutely going to advocate incredibly hard, I'm a a pit bull when it comes to some of these topics, um, safety is one. You know, if we can't have smart children or we can't have safe children, you know, if we don't have safe schools, so that is um, a very basic thing. The core job of B C P S is to educate children, that is their core job. Right now, the current situation, when you have metrics like forty percent on grade, that means sixty percent or not. I, you know, I look at that as an abject failure of the existing administration. The existing governance has not done their job. Um, I believe that I can do better, you know, as a, as Baltimore County Board of Education uh, for District One, I know that I would fight for the children in Lansdowne.
Thirty seconds.
Fight for the children in Dundalk, the same as I would fight for the children in Towson. I don't care where you come from, I'm a football coach. You coach the kids that are in front of you and I'm standing up to coach the kids that would be for all of B C P S, not by color, not by creed, not by ethnicity, they all deserve an opportunity. And they don't deserve favoritism, they all deserve an equal opportunity to succeed.
That's the time. He finished within the two minutes.
Mr. Kendra.
Uh, so first, I thank you to the League of Women Voters and and double A C P of Randallstown and everyone in attendance here today for uh, hosting this and attending and listening to what we have to say. Uh, you know, what I tell folks is our race is the last one on the ballot, but I can promise you it's not the least important decision you're going to be making on November eighth. Uh, and so I'm really excited that we got Top Pretty to share a little bit about us and our visions for the school. Uh, the mission is clear. We have to provide a world class twenty first century education right here to every student in Baltimore County. I have a vision for that, that vision includes one, focusing on student well being, two, equity and inclusion, and three, educator advocacy. By focusing on those three principles and incorporating them in our vision for our schools, we can achieve that mission. We can provide every student here in Baltimore County with an education that sets them up to succeed. One, no matter what they go on to do, and two, no matter where they come from and what they look like, because every student, no matter where they come from in the county, no matter what they go on to do, deserve every opportunity available to them. And it is our job as a school system and by providing a twenty first century world class education to make that happen. I really look forward to bringing my perspective to the board as someone who went to this, these schools for thirteen years, who's born and raised in this community. Uh, especially on the west side of Baltimore County, I've seen these issues for my whole life, I've seen generations of students, my cousins, my sister, uh, my friends who have all gone through the school system and I've seen the issues, I've seen the places we do great, but I've seen a lot of places for improvement. And I'm excited to bring that unique perspective to the board to make sure that we are doing right.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, and I really look forward to working with all of our stakeholders, our community activists, our families, uh, parents, uh, and of course the students themselves. Truly make sure that we are providing every, everyone, all of our children with the opportunity to succeed once they graduate from our schools, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Randallstown N double A C P for hosting this forum and to all of you for listening to our thoughts and plans regarding public education in Baltimore County. My name is Robin Harvey and I'm a candidate for the Baltimore County Board of Education in District One. I want to work to ensure that we have a quality education for all students. And we get there by making sure that all of our core curriculum classes are taught by certified teachers. We get there by making sure we have robust and inclusive parent participation programs. We get there by setting standards for school construction and renovation across all schools. And we must make sure that every child is in a school environment that is safe and free from violence. I'm asking for your vote on November eighth. I know that together we can move public education forward in Baltimore County and fulfill our promise to our children of a safe, quality and equitable education that positions them for success. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dominowski.
Yes, I also want to thank everyone uh, for taking such an interest in this very important Board of Education election, my name again is Maggie Lips Dominowski and I am a lifelong resident of Baltimore County, a majority of which is in the district I'm running. I have three children in public elementary school. I am a uh, board member of my P T A, I am a, been a room parent, I have been a team team parent, I have uh, been a coach, I have been uh, a cor- uh, after school club organizer. Um, what I lack in experience, I think I make up for in my inexperience, and what I mean by that is I don't have a set um idea of how exactly we're going to fix this problem, I am open to listening with to my board members. And I know I have friends, I know that I need to listen to the the people in my community, the parents, the students, the uh, can, the the teachers. We need to be able to work together to solve this problem, we cannot think that we are right only in our, in our objectives, we have to be able to work together and be adults in the room and make decisions that are best for everyone inside those school buildings and create and provide the best education we possibly can, because that is our goal, that is in our, that is what we we are asked to do, to provide the best education possible for our children.
Thirty seconds.
We need to involve our parents in oversight and we need to listen to everyone, all of our parents, all of our students, all of our teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Dominowski, and thank you to each of our candidates for participating in the meet and greet and serving as an example of civil discourse. You have given Baltimore County residents a great deal to think about as we vote in November. I would also like to thank our meet and greet committee for arranging this event. As well as the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the N double A C P Randallstown for co-sponsoring the meet and greet. In the next few days, recordings of this session will be available on the League's website and on vote four one one dot org. That's vote four one one dot org. General elections day is November the eighth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty two. Early voting begins on October twenty seventh and ends on November the third at eight P M. Vote four one one dot org is the League of Women Voters Free Online Voters Guide. Your one stop shopping site for everything about your local ballot, candidate positions in their own words, polling places and more. Hard copies of the guides will be available soon at branches of the Baltimore County Public Library, senior centers, head start centers and college campuses. Once again, we hope that you will consider joining the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randallstown N double A C P to support our work in bringing involvement and equity to all the citizens in Baltimore County. Thanks again for being with us, another special thank you to our candidates and to everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.